Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting of May the 10th. County Clerk, would you read your roll call, please?
Mr. Cantle.
Here.
Mr. Shyland.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Schibberdecker. And Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Six council members present and two absent.
Very good, thank you. Please rise with me Pastor Bruce Wade, who is with us this evening. He will lead us in the invitation.
I'd be glad to.
Appreciate it, Pastor.
Thank you. Father, we are grateful for the blessings of this day, such a beautiful day as you've given us. And as I thank you for this, I want to remember the states around us who are recovering from the storms of yesterday afternoon and overnight. Especially do I pray for those who lost loved ones in Oklahoma and some of the communities that were devastated. Lord, help them and help the relief workers and those that will recover and help them get a new start. We're grateful, Lord, to know that you'll be on site to give your presence and your encouragement to those who so need you. In our community, Lord, we continue to move forward and we're grateful for all that you do and for all that serve this city. I would continue to pray, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, administrators, and those that lead all departments within this city, and those that wear the blue and are the boots on the ground, Lord. I pray for them as they do the hard work daily of keeping us together and moving forward as a community. I want to be faithful, Lord, to continue to remember those within the city family who need your daily and perpetual care regarding their health. I pray, Lord, for Gabriel, Mayor Benton, Mr. Shyland, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Chief Myers, Bill Laswell, Ms. Bush Jost, and any and all others that should be on my list. Bless them as if I had mentioned them by name. For this session tonight and those that will participate, I pray your blessings on it and any decisions that are made here tonight, that they be pleasing to you. We agree on this and pray together in Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At the beginning of each council meeting, we set aside a time for visitors that have a concern that they'd like to share with the council to come forward and do that. We just ask that you limit your comments to five minutes and again, give us your name and your address. So at this time, is there anyone who'd like to come forward and share with the council an issue in the city? Seeing no one coming forward, I understand we have the new Fulton Sun editor with us this evening. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
No.
Oh, please do. We'd like to know your...
I'm Johnny Gray. The Fulton Sun now. I have pretty deep roots in the community. If any of you saw my column that I wrote, my ancestors actually established Jefferson City in the early 1800s. And we're actually going to have a grave walk through, I think it's the first weekend of June, at the old city cemetery. So come on down and meet the ancestors.
Great. Well, thanks for being here this evening.
Yeah, welcome.
We look forward to working with you. And welcome to the city, or back to the city. We do this evening have a public hearing scheduled. Matter of fact, it looks like we have two public hearings scheduled. The first hearing is to consider a proposed annexation of a parcel within to the city. And I will open the session or the hearing by making or declaring it open, which I'll do now. Then I will make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. And after that, I'll make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of that. So at this point, is there anyone present who would like to speak and support, excuse me, in opposition of this proposed annexation, which is Lot 2 of Townsend subdivision? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed annexation?
Now, is this the smaller of the two that want to be in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This is the one out off the Airport Road, Canal 304. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed annexation? Very good. I'll now issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposed annexation. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed annexation? Again, seeing no one coming forward. The second call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed annexation? Again, seeing everyone pretty well ignoring me, I'll go ahead for the third call. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this proposed annexation? Very good, thank you. This hearing will now be declared closed, and we'll go back to our original agenda. So at this time, then we'll consider another parcel.
A lot of food for thought.
Say that again?
We'll continue to, I'm sure, hear on that subject.
So at this time, we will consider another annexation proposed for the city, which happens to be located in Section 3 of Townsend 47 North. And again, I will declare that this hearing is now open. And I will make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the proposed annexation. We have ghosts with us this evening. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to this annexation? Again, no one's coming forward. Third and final call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this proposed annexation? Okay, seeing no one. There will now be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter being proposed. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed annexation? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. I promise to keep this very brief. The 20-minute speech is not necessary. As many of the members of council know, I've worked for the city for a short time, I think approximately four months, still on probation. I would like more than anything to become a resident of the city of Fulton. This group may not know that I don't live in town. Courtney, if you need my address, it's 5060 Hickory Hills Drive. I live about two miles from city limits. Shortly after accepting the position that was offered to me at the city, my wife and I began a search looking for a home, property, something that would facilitate our moving to town. Many weeks, maybe even a couple of months went by, and we stumbled across this property that is being discussed tonight, currently owned by HLW. And to be clear, my wife and I would like to purchase that property. So I'm kind of interested in this annexation matter. I'm looking for the support of the council to help me become a resident of the city of Fulton by getting a piece of property annexed and so that we may build a home. As far as utilities are concerned in that area, there are none close by. This utility superintendent and I have looked at the property. We have discussed at great lengths some of the costs involved in getting utilities to that area. I have no expectation that the city will bear those costs. We have run some numbers. We've looked at the cost of getting electricity out there. I'm fully aware of what that's going to cost and have full intent of paying to have electricity ran to that location. We are looking at sewer and we are also looking at gas. Those two may prove cost prohibitive, but we are considering the extension of those utilities as well. Additionally named or specified in the petition, you will notice that there is no expectation of the road being improved. It is a gravel road. It's County Road 105, also known as Herring Mill Road.
Is that road considered in the city limits or out of the city limits?
Yeah, half of that road, the east side of that road is the, in city limits.
Oh, it's kind of hard to tell with this drawing.
It is, yeah.
I own half of it.
Property to the east side of 105 is in the city limits.
Councilman's place over here owns active.
That's right, yes, yeah.
On one section, one section.
Are you planning on purchasing the entire 40 acres or just...
Yes, sir. That is the intent. There is no intent today to develop that property. My wife and I are solely looking for a place to build a home. That is not to say at some point in the future, we might not sell a few lots off of that. That is not currently in the plan. I think that was really the biggies that I wanted to make sure that was noticed, the expectation of not improving the gravel road out there. And I have no expectation that the city's going to pay to have the utilities extended.
So actually, what I'm looking at here is that once it reaches that property line, then the entire road is in...
That's right. That's right. That 1,300, roughly 1,300 feet there would be all city property. And no expectation the county is going to maintain that. So the city would bear that burden, if you will, of scraping that rock. I think we maintain the east side of that road on occasion anyway. So, but anyway, I don't look for the city to pave that road. That is not necessary.
That's the key statement.
Thank you.
And so you're never saying that you may not sell a couple of lots out there eventually? Not any time soon?
Right, no, not any time soon, yeah.
Before he could do that, he would have to do a, develop a subdivision plat and run that through P and Z for their approval, and then it would come to you before he could do a subdivision.
Somebody can invite the council out to Deer Hunt.
Sure. In the past year.
Says it's going to be in the city limits, you can only bo-hunt.
There you go, that's true. I've additionally visited with Les about the number of cows, chickens, and goats that can roam on agricultural property. We would ask that that be zoned agriculture at this time.
To be agricultural, is that what you said?
Yes, yes, ma'am. A1 specified is what we're looking for.
Yeah, we do have limits on what animals you can have.
I'm not really... I guess never say never, right? But I'm not a farmer at heart in this particular case, so...
Well, my concern is the sewer situation, since we already have a problem. I know it's just you and one family, but still, you're tying into the sewer lines. New line's going to have to be run out there. Are they already there or what?
Yeah, the extension of a sewer line would fall on me. It is going to be quite costly to extend the sewer main, some 1,500 feet. Rough estimate of a number that I've been given is on the order of about $50 a foot. I mean, there's going to be serious discussions as to whether, you know, whether that is something that would be done at this time. All options are still being considered on the particular utility.
I suppose we can still put residents, if they don't have sewer to the property, can still put in septic systems?
Yes.
So...
And he's going to have 40 acres, so he's going to meet both the city requirement for being far enough away, as well as the state requirement for having a...
I think the minimum is like five acres or three acres.
Or three.
Something like that. And there's propane available. I mean, there's options.
Yes.
One thing, and this probably, we're getting real deep into this for this time of the meeting.
That's true.
If you own a piece of property in the city limits, isn't it the burden on the city to bring sewer to that property line?
No.
Not in this particular case due to the distances, I'm sure.
Not in your case, but if you were to sell some lots off?
If I were to fully develop that area, the cost of that sewer would fall on the developer, which would be me in this case.
That's correct.
Which is why I'm not all that excited about developing.
I've experienced in there. Sewer is real expensive and doesn't pay well.
Does our police chief have a problem if this is annexed? Is that taking his road officers kind of out of their normal area?
In all honesty, I have not posed that question.
If I may, St. Eunice comes into Herring Mill just north of this, so it's, they're anywhere, I mean theoretically, they're in that area anyway.
It's about 1,000 feet.
It's within seeing distance.
It's not very far.
Of where we go now, anyway.
Right.
If they're on that road southbound, they're in the city limits anyway.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how come you haven't developed the one side of the road then? Never mind. Just kidding.
I appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll issue the second call for anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this proposed Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed annexation? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll declare that this public hearing is now closed. And we'll move back to our regular session. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. We have listed a further discussion on the Whiskey Wild Building. We're at the point with the Whiskey Wild Building that I think that the alternatives that we've discussed with you, we've really not had any more feedback on any of that. And the building continues to sit there and deteriorate. So we wanted to bring this matter back to you and see if you'd like to give administration some direction on what to do with that building.
My personal opinion is knock it down. If, like it was presented as, the bricks are falling off, the roof is a mess, all this kind of stuff, nobody wants that. So why not just knock it down and you'll have a lot or whatever? And maybe the lot itself is more valuable than what that old building is.
Do we have any estimates of how much the cost...
We'll definitely add added value to it. Right now, the cost of raising the building would be detrimental to the sale of the property.
Jeremy Polston, the building ground supervisor, received a verbal estimate between 40, 30 and $40,000 to knock it down and bring it back to green.
We'll have to go out for...
We would have to bid that. But that's the anticipated ballpark of demolition.
They would knock it down, the hollowed off, clean up the site and everything?
Yes.
Unless we direct them to put it back in its feet, so...
We can come up with that money?
We could do that.
I'm for it. I make a motion.
I hate to see...
Did you make a motion or did you just say, set your piece?
No, you all do what needs to be done. I'm just saying, tear it down.
I'll make the motion and tear it down.
Second. Very good. I have a motion and a second to raise the Whiskey Wild Building. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
I'd just like to make mention that the reason I'm supportive of this is because I'm concerned of the safety involved with this building right now.
Yeah, I think it's another reason why we brought it back to you.
Right.
Mr. Mayor? If the city was going to keep the lot, I know they said stop the lot, maybe we could work with the entrepreneurship or the Chamber and Bruce to see if we can, if the city, in partnership with somebody that would want to build a commercial buildings or offices back in that spot?
Okay, yeah, sure. We'd be happy to reach out to them. In case you didn't know, Mr. Hackman keeps a listing of all vacant and buildings or sites that are available for development within the city. So we'll get him to add this to it.
Would you let our, I don't think it's historical, but let our historical commission know in case they have a last building neighbors, like to be aware of what we do there. I don't think that's...
Thank you. Okay, very good. So I have a motion on the floor to raise the Whiskey Wild Building. If there's not any further discussion, I'll call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. As you know, we've been having a project going on in the city of metering our sewers and with the intent of trying to find out where we can develop a plan of how we can handle the I and I that we experience on big rain events. And Mr. Kyle is with us this evening, and he's going to give us an update on what's been happening. Thank you. Well, maybe.
I put a little fire, a little handout that you guys have just in case something goes wrong here. But yeah, we've got 19 sanitary sewer flow meters and three rain gauges throughout the city that were put in March 28th of this year. It's, we're hoping that it's just a 60-day project. That 60-day project is costing us about $108,000 and is being done by Burns &amp; McDonald. The 80, about $86,000 of that 108 is being paid for through CDBG funding, a grant through CDBG. And so $20,000 to $30,000 is being borne by the city. Kind of quickly, inflow and infiltration, what is it? You guys have kind of been well-versed in this, but this little diagram kind of shows you what inflow means. That's the black listed items, kind of direct storm sewer items that are connected to our sanitary sewer system, like roof drains, inlets in the street that could potentially be tied to the sanitary sewer system. And those make a big immediate impact to our sewer system. Infiltration is kind of faulty, faulty lines, faulty manholes that exist in the sewer, sanitary sewer system itself. So, you know, lateral connections that go from possibly your home or business to the sewer system that have cracks or holes in them, items like that. Manholes that are, that are, have cracks and have deteriorated over time. So hopefully, we don't have many issues with our manholes since we've used a big chunk of CDB funding to line our manholes and seal our manholes up, so... Go into the next page, if you'll help me out in there, Darren.
Chris something.
Somebody turned it off on me up here. There we go. This quick map of the city of Fulton kind of shows you the 19 areas that we have. It's just in there showing the different colors or different metered areas. And we have three rain gauges that kind of one north of town, one in the north part of town, one actually on this building, and one a little more in the southern part.
When they laid that map out, they tried to get between 20 and 30,000 lineal feet of sewer pipe in each of the zones.
That's correct. Right now, in our initial results, this area right in the center of town is our worst area that we're noticing so far. It kind of covers from Court Street over to Vine Street and Fourth to Fifth Street up to 10th. So it'll give you a kind of idea where it's at. And it, let me flip to the next page here. And what Burns &amp; McDonald is doing is putting these graphs together for us that depict what's going on with each area. So what this graph is showing you is during normal conditions like today, the flow in the sewer system is right down about here, which for our worst areas is about, you know, less than a half a million gallons a day. Now, on April 26th, we had a one-inch rainfall. It's a black line coming down from the top. We had a one-inch rainfall and boom, you see a big spike in the graph. That is showing you that, you know, we're getting immediate storm water into the sanitary sewer system. And that's going back to the page before, that's called inflow. So we're getting, we're obviously in that area. To me, maybe we've got inlets tied to the sanitary sewer system, you know, roof drains tied into them. We're going to have to investigate what's going on.
So you want from a half a million to 2 million?
Half a million to 2 million, yeah.
With a one-inch rain?
With a one-inch rain. Now, mind you, during this time so far, you know, we have not had a, you know, St. Stenson Creek down here really has not been rocking and rolling. We haven't had a huge amount of rain like you'd think that we might have by now. You know, we've had some, had some smaller rain events, but nothing, nothing that really gets the creek really up.
Kyle, one other thing, please. Is this graph just for that center section of town?
This graph is just...
Or is this for the whole city?
This graph is just for...
That's number 15, which is down in the southeast, isn't it? If I read that right.
Site 15?
This graph, this graph is right in this area.
Yeah, the center.
So you're looking at probably a 30,000 square foot area, so...
Oh, so that doesn't mean anything with the 15 in front of it?
It does. It's Burns &amp; McDonald has a numbering system that keeps them on track and where we're at.
They don't match, huh?
Kyle, if you've got, if you've got storm sewer and rainwater in the same vein, how do you separate that? Or has it all become...
How do you separate the storm? How do you get the storm sewer out of the sanitary sewer? Is that what you're asking, Wayne? Well, we've got to go investigate how that storm sewer is getting into the sewer system.
Is our storm sewer considered closed?
They're supposed to be separate systems, yeah. They're supposed to be a separate system. The storm sewer is supposed to end up in our creeks and of course, our sanitary and our wastewater treatment plant, so... But of course, when it rains a lot around here, we get a lot of rainwater that inundates our wastewater treatment plant. And the Department of Natural Resources has mandated that we figure out why that is the case, so we don't keep burping out of our wastewater treatment plant. And so what we have to do, we have to take the results, figure out where are our, where we're the worst at, you know? And, you know, one of the things that Burns &amp; McDonald is also showing us areas that we don't need to focus our attention to. Obviously, right now, one of the areas we need to focus on is right here from City Hall kind of over to the Missouri School for the Deaf area.
But basically, if the storm water gets into the sewer, it all becomes sewage?
Yes.
Right.
You can't separate it unless it's mixed together.
Once it's mixed, you can't separate it.
Right. So what we have to do is find out how that storm sewer is getting into the sewer and make sure that that doesn't happen. If we've got to fix pipes, if we've got to separate...
Is that where you do smoke tests?
Smoke testing, cammering, dye testing, items like that.
Did any other area indicate this kind of, or a similar type of result?
Our next, our next worst area is over in your neighborhood, kind of Mohawk, Chippewa, Morningside, kind of up to Z. On the map, it's this area right in here.
Will we start to get to the point where we'll go to homes and visually look at their systems, their guttering, their, you know, their basement?
Well, one of the things that Wayne mentioned, smoke testing, that if we do smoke testing and we see smoke coming out of the, off of your roof, well, we know your roof drains are tied into the sewer system. And now, what do we do to fix it?
It's kind of interesting because they've already smoked tested my neighborhood.
That's what I was gonna say.
If it indicates, well, we didn't see any problems. So gotta be something else.
Thank you. That'd be done, the project is scheduled to be done at the end of this month. We did a sixty-day contract.
May twenty-eighth.
I really, I really hope we get a, the monster rain that fills the creek.
We need to go in Walser.
So once this is complete and there's a rain, there should be no influx in the amount of gallons that are going through there because it's raining.
They, according to the consulting engineers we hired, we interviewed, I think, four different groups. If we're successful, we'll eliminate half of the inflow, infiltration.
But an indicator is, is if the gauges go off and show there's more going through there, that we've got a leak somewhere.
Right now, our sewer plant treats about two million gallons of sewage a day. When we get a gully washer, that number goes to about twelve million gallons a day. The sewer plant, as is designed, once our improvements are completed, will be good, we can go up to about seven and a half million gallons a day, okay? If we can get that twelve million gallons a day down to seven and a half, I'm gonna feel great. Because the last, cutting anything beyond that, or even maybe getting down to that number, there's gonna be, the cost to remove the next gallon of water is gonna be more and more as we continue to search and look. Hopefully, we're gonna find, hopefully, I'm careful I say that, we'll be able to find some storm drains that are tied directly in. And that'll be easy to take out of the sanitary sewer. But if we end up with ten storm drains that are tied into the sanitary sewer, what are we gonna do with that water? Now, we're gonna have to figure out how to get that water out of that neighborhood to the creek. Because right now, it's using the sewer lines.
Right.
And if we don't let it use the sewer lines, how are we gonna get that water to the creek? Okay?
Mm-hmm, I'm waiting.
One of the things that you guys might want to think about is, you know, there's a private and public side to this. You know, we can obviously chase the public side, that's your, you know, inlets, defects in pipes that are on us and whatnot. But, you know, once you start chasing the private sector side, you know, how are we gonna go about doing that? There's complications of that, that potentially puts you on private property, you know, how you handle those items, so.
Well, Kyle?
Mr. Moore, go ahead.
Is there any way that Burns and McDonald can determine after they do the middle section and over, that much is really private to what is ours?
Not with what's in the scope right now.
Not right now.
Yeah. All they're, all they're really doing is giving us target areas, where to focus on first, where's our worst areas. And, you know, it'd be up to us or in addition to their contract or a new contract with someone else to chase it, you know? The way I, the way I'm looking at it right now is that we would use our forces to try to, try to chase down the problem and correct the problem.
And Kyle kind of touched on it, but I just want to say it again to make it clear. It's not only gonna show us the areas of town that we need to work on more, it's also gonna show us parts of town that are good. And we don't have to spend any more time, we don't have to spend any more resources to determine if there's a problem in that area.
Well, the idea is to keep that flow consistent without any rainwater in it.
Minimize the amount of rainwater that gets in the sanitary sewer.
Because we want it to stay consistent twelve months out of the year.
So right now, you're telling me that sewer water and rainwater is mixed together and going down the same pipe?
Yeah. Making it to the sewer plant.
May I? Couple questions. Kyle, what is, why does this matter? Why does it matter if rainwater gets into the sewer system?
Well, it matters because...
The easy answer, I mean, you don't have to get into real complicated stuff.
Okay. It matters because at the end of the, at the end of the distribution center is our wastewater treatment plant, our sewer plant.
Okay.
And that sewer plant was designed to handle a certain amount.
Right.
Bill mentioned seven and a half million gallons. Right now, when it rains, we'll go back to his, twelve million gallons.
Right.
If it overflows, we spill out in the creek, now we have the Department of Natural Resources coming in town. And, you know, we're already under a consent order already with the Department of Natural Resources.
Right.
For sewer issues. And so that's why it's important.
And I'm glad you brought up that because part of that order wasn't that to, for us to educate the public on this, on the...
Well...
Or on one of our documents, I don't remember which, but...
That's, that's a really key element to our storm sewer permit with the Department of Natural Resources. And there's a lot of crossover between sanitary sewer and storm sewer and both of our permits with the Department of Natural Resources.
I'm thinking we take this information and share it with the public, put it in our newsletter, put it on the channel, and ask the newspaper to really talk this up. And, you know, tell people, look, if your sewer, if your gutters are, you know, your drains out of your basements or anything like that, or going into the sanitary sewer system, they need to be disconnected from that, you know? And just maybe that might help us some too, just trying to educate the public some more on this.
Yeah.
Maybe something, you know, we may get a few.
It can't...
Ten percent.
Definitely, definitely can't hurt that people are educated by the time we get to their front door and say, hey, we've got a problem, that they understand what the problem is.
Right. And they, you know, they may take measures before we have to do the smoke test and find...
Do we have any of the really long cameras that like your traditional plumber would use, or Roto-Rooter guy would use? We've got those, yeah. So might be a thing that we could offer a service to citizens, that if you want us to be worried about it, let us come in your house, we'll camera it and just see. Because that'd be the only way to really know.
Yeah, there's definitely methods that can be done, like a dye test too, that could potentially find some issues.
So is this wastewater going into Stinson Creek as well, this sewer water?
Well, there's potential there, yes.
My concern is you will often see in the paper that students from the schools are down there cleaning up or whatever, and I don't want my kid down there if there's sewer waste in that thing.
Well, along, along the creek, if you've ever been down to the trail, you'll notice a lot of manholes, you know? Man, the sewer system tends to follow the lowest area of town, and that's also where the creeks reside too. So when the creeks, when water, when water gets up in the creek, there is potential there, yes.
Whenever they're through with all this survey and you find out all the bad locations, how long is it gonna take you to get this all straightened out and to get it the way it should be?
Kyle's gonna retire with this project?
Years and years.
We've been, we've been fighting it already for five, ten years.
And that's why we'd like to, we'd like to, that's really the reason for this, to help us target. Instead of jumping all over town and trying to fix this or that, let's pick out the work, where we can get the biggest impact, the biggest bang for the buck, and attack that. Because it all affects every, no matter what ward you're in, it affects everybody the same because we all own that wastewater treatment plant.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I kind of like Councilman West's theory better about educating people, those who are really concerned might find that they are and do it themselves. But if we get into private, I have a feeling with that because I guess I've been here as long as, and I says, you know, some of those neighborhoods are that way because they were, that was the law at that time.
Right.
And I think if we walked into a elderly senior that lived by herself and say, oh, this needs to be changed, you need to do that, she's not gonna be before to do that. So I think we should just stick with the administration's policy working on our side because I think that would be open up. But in the future build, we make sure it's done right. That's just my concern.
Thank you. No, that's a good point. As Councilman West said, of course, we've been working on this almost entire time I've been mayor, which is five years now. And we've had a number of property owners in that five years because of our news coverage have found issues when they were done remodeling, et cetera, and have corrected their situation. So no, all your points are well taken. I think we'll have to continue just to be cooperative between us and the property owners and figure out the best route that we can go.
Every other city in the country's got the same problems we got too, guys. This is not unique.
No. Kyle, will we get a final report when this is finished and show each?
Yes.
I really, this is really interesting, but, you know, it doesn't cross-reference very well to over this. But this was, I guess, just a half-inch rain according to this side chart. Is it a half-inch or one inch?
I believe it was a ballpark of one inch.
Looked like it was over one inch to me.
I'm looking at the little spike there between point four and point six. I'm not looking at it right. Doesn't matter that much.
Yeah, it's indicated a one-inch event and the graph doesn't necessarily follow that.
Doesn't really mean anything, it just as much how it spikes up there and then tails off.
Yeah, we're still, we're still kind of waiting for polished information, if you will, from Burns and McDonald. We've got a meeting with them tomorrow, and of course, you'll get the, you'll get the polished information and the complete information at the end.
We've lined a lot of our manways, manholes, manholes, right? And done a lot of other work. Do you see, are we making any headway? Would this have been worse six years ago on the same rain event, or is it hard to tell?
Man, I got a feel that we're making, that we're making headway, but right now, I can only, I can only give you a feeling. I can't give you, I can't give you, you know, fact metered information.
We're looking for that silver bullet, we haven't found it yet.
So, you know, as an engineer, I hate to give you a feel and not a, not a yes or no.
That's why I asked you, I knew you'd give me that kind of an answer. One engineer to another.
What about the new apartments there on, right by McDonald's on Tyler? Whenever they were constructing those, did they run into any problems that maybe we could resolve at that time? Or was there anything wrong?
None that I'm aware of. There may be, but I'm just ignorant to them at the moment, I do not.
And he's fixing to build about three more of those buildings. So do we need to check into that? Anything we can do maybe to prevent some of these problems?
All new construction has to be built to code, and new code does not allow surface water into the sanitary sewer. So that's like something that less, as the building inspector would go on chat.
Okay.
I've got one other question.
Let's make this the last one.
That, in with the cost of this, didn't we end up getting some meters out of the deal too?
We, we have, we already have four meters that we own. And so in with the, in with the cost of this is frankly, we were doing a poor job with the meters that we already own. And, and so quite honestly, what, what we were looking at there, Richard, is that the meters that this company uses is the same meter that we use. And to get some training on the meters that we own, so we could effectively pursue this in the past, in the future, I should say.
So when we're done, we've still got just our four meters, is that what?
But now we know how to...
I was thinking we ended up with some of ours. Are they repaired ours, didn't they, or something?
Yes, they calibrate them.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Let's move on to new business, and if you want to stay up here, I think you're going to talk a little bit more here. Where first item under new business is MoDOT's STP fund discussion.
Yeah, yearly, in the past yearly, Missouri Department of MoDOT, excuse me, I'm getting my agencies mixed up. Department of Transportation. Through their Surface Transportation Program, the city receives forty, about forty thousand dollars, just a little over forty thousand dollars a year that can be stockpiled for different projects. We use, we use these funds on the Seventh Street Bridge project over there by Westminster College to help fund that, that bridge. And this funding is going away, potentially going away. Basically, MoDOT came and visited us and said that their commission is going to vote, I think on July, on their July seventh meeting, whether they're, whether they're gonna keep these funds or not. They've been able to take, strip these away from us for a while now, and they've left them in, but because of the state's funding needs or lack of funds, they're, they're looking at not, not passing forty thousand dollars to, to our city and other cities, so. Any questions?
It's gonna be an all-or-nothing deal. It's gonna save MoDOT approximately, I believe it was ten million dollars a year.
Yeah. Ten point three.
Their infrastructure. Would you like a copy? It's got, because it's got some Jeff City numbers and stuff in here too.
We will have, this year, we'll have two years, so we'll have about eighty-three thousand dollars that we'll have essentially in the bank to use in the next two years.
By two thousand and nineteen. We just wanted to bring that to your attention.
There'll be public comment opportunities for MoDOT, so we'll have to submit some public comment to say, please keep it, but it looks like it's going away.
I think the other item that Kyle, or we've talked a little bit, that again, if you've got a project in mind you think we really need to do in the community, and you think it might be in that eighty-three thousand dollar category, you know, please bring it to our attention and we'll see what we can do about maybe programming it in. But it appears that we're gonna lose that forty thousand a year, forty thousand plus.
Can we use that on collaborative projects that MoDOT would like, like the roundabout project?
Yes, the answer is yes. Two projects that, that come to my mind are the Second Street Bridge down here. I know in a couple of years, this is gonna be up for replacement. MoDOT inspector has told, has told us so. That's, that's a spot. Another area of town that's kind of one of my, that's to me an eyesore is the entryway into town on Fourth Street from Westminster, kind of into town. And, you know, I could see us potentially using that funds with some other funding opportunities that we have to make that a nice entry into town. And it's MoDOT right-of-way too, so.
Kyle, would you like to just go ahead with the right-of-way permit?
Yeah. The, I'm proposing this new right-of-way permit. We've had a permit in the past, it was fashioned real similar to what MoDOT's right-of-way is. And I felt like our permitting process in the past is not, I feel like we can do better. And, you know, these companies, these utility companies that come into town, I think that we can monitor their, their work a little bit better and require them to kind of give us status and schedule on open items that we have with them. And so I've tried to design this new permit to give us a little, a little teeth when it comes to these utility companies that are in the, that come into town. Right now, they roll into town and if they stop in for a permit, they fill one out. In the past, we've given, given them six, a blanket six months to do their work, well, you know, there's been, there's been minimal follow-up to them. They leave town, we potentially have issues with property owners because of the way they've done their work. So with this permit and the new construction, the stormwater inspector that I have, I'm hoping to change that, so. I'm hoping to change that, so.
Is this modeled up after any other communities?
I looked at some others, and then I wrote it how I wanted it to, so.
Does everything in here permissible?
Yes and no.
I believe so. I believe so. I know that I've had some staff members read it, Daryl was one of them, and Rob Barnes is the other, and took some suggestions that, that they had and incorporated those comments in here as well, so. Tried not to, try not to, you know, just put, put stuff in here to waste time.
You could truly say you did it my way.
To a degree.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
We'll let you guys think about that, probably put it on the next agenda for approval.
Very good, thanks. I need to talk to you after the meeting. The next item on the agenda is council concerns, and this is an item that we placed here for, to allow council members to bring their concerns to the, any concerns they have that's not on the agenda forward for us to discuss. And after last meeting, I decided that what I would do is, is just recognize each council person, so you all have a chance to bring your concern forward, but we're not trying to talk over each other. We were doing a little bit of that last time, so. Let me start at, to my right here, Councilman Moore, do you have any concerns you'd like to bring up?
Oh, yes, sir, why don't you start with me first, but that's all right. I, my first one is, I know y'all get tired of this same story, but I want to know if we could change our ordinance on commercial parking lots, because I'm back on my same old thing that McDonald's should be required to put speed bumps on the north side because somebody's gonna get killed. You just go up there and say, them apartment tenants fly through there thirty and forty miles an hour to that parking lot, and I watched the other day, I must see two accidents there. They need to be slowed down, let them hit a big speed bump or something, I don't know, but I think there is a crisis getting ready to begin on that parking lot on that north side. I don't know what they think, that was one of my concerns.
Can we just issue that, you take that concern to the traffic commission, and you guys take a look at that, please?
Could we put a speed bump just as they enter, just at the entrance to, on our side of the street? I mean, all we can really do to a private.
Well, they pick up their speed after they turn into the parking lot to go between the cars and the drive.
I don't think there's a lot we can do on a private property like that.
Well, we might talk to them.
Well, we could talk to them, yeah, suggest it, would be good.
Sorry. Let's let traffic commission look at it.
I'll take it to traffic commission.
Go ahead.
Then my next concern was, and she's not, council person who's not here this evening, but I talked to her about it, our subdivision ordinance about lights and sidewalks and, you know, because in my ward, there's people who still don't have streetlights, and they've been in the city longer than out there. And people do listen to our council meetings, and I did get one person that said something about it, but we've been here almost thirty years and don't have a streetlight.
Very good, we'll take that to utility board, see when you come up with a plan, okay?
All right.
Got another one?
And my last complaint is I still getting complaints at Cardinal and William Woods from the merchants and people in the hotel that, about lighting at that intersection. It's dark up there.
Okay. Streetlights, okay.
Where? What, what?
Out by Dollar General.
Cardinal Drive.
Cardinal Drive. Is that William Woods or what?
Westminster.
Westminster. Well, William Woods comes from the.
It comes into there somewhere.
It switches over to the red station.
Okay, thanks, Steve. We'll have Daryl look at that. Anything else, sir?
It's all mine today.
Thank you. Councilman Vaughn?
I'm fine.
You're passing? Okay, thank you.
Pass it on.
Councilwoman Gray?
Are you ready for the shock? I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. Councilman Cannel?
I'm good.
Councilman West?
Well, I didn't have anything until Mr. Moore started, he reminded me of something. I'd like to see us start thinking about converting a lot of our streetlights to LEDs as we replace them. Think it would, they would last longer and, they're a little costlier at the beginning, I think, but I think the.
Probably twice a year, Daryl and I have a vendor in the building, maybe more than that.
Probably.
In the, in the building that will show us how, will save us money, and they'll even offer to pay for it if we use the savings to pay them back for the improvements and things.
The costs are coming down.
The costs have come down drastically in the last several.
We're doing a lot of conversion out the plant to LEDs, because we can't really keep the place lit with incandescents, so, just a thought.
We got it on the list.
That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. We'll take that to you board also. Councilman Shyland?
I'd just like to share what happened to me this morning. I'm at the house, phone rings, Bill and the mayor, they're at the airport, and they said, "You need to get out here now." So, I jumped in the car and zipped out there, and there was this big diamond machine that cut the runway out. They're complete, they're finished with that thing right now, they started this morning, it's done. Each truck, Bill timed it, took two minutes and fifty seconds. Fill one truck up, back another truck up, and start filling it up. It was an amazing project. That machine is awesome. But project, that part of the project is done.
Did you get a video, so the rest of it can see it?
No, that's why Bill, Bill, Bill.
That's why, that's why I called you.
So, the airport runway replacement job is on its way?
I'm telling you what, it's too late to give it up now.
Okay, very good, thank you. Appreciate that, and I'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Vaughn, if you'd present Resolution 3254, which has to do with signing of the amendment to the Allied Waste Contract.
Resolution number 3254, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on the behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the amendment to Allied Waste Service Disposal Agreement. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3254 at tonight's meeting.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt 3254, is there any discussion of that motion? Again, this is an extension of the current waste contract that we have with Allied Waste of Republic, I think is their current name, at the Jefferson City landfill, to take our solid waste.
The thirty-two dollars a ton, is that the same rate?
No, sir, that represents an increase.
Four dollars and fifty cents.
Wow, so it was twenty seven?
Twenty seven fifty, twenty seven fifty, Tracy? Yeah.
But that'll be locked in for five years.
Locked in for five years.
And it's been a long time since we've had an increase also, so, so they recoup a little and then give it back.
Yeah, the bad thing about locking them in is then you get a big jump next time.
Very good, there you go. Nice to know where. So, how much will this cost?
About fifty thousand dollars a year.
Additional? We're gonna have to raise rates.
We'll do that evaluation at the, when we get around the budget time, but I, I'm hoping we're gonna be able to absorb it. Just look at the capital replacement schedule a little bit, work it in that way.
Okay. See if we can tighten the budget first. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 3254, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll now move on to ordinances, and we have first reading ordinance. First bill number 1449 has to do with the annexation of a property at 4978 County Road 304. Councilman Moore, would you please present bill number 1449 for first reading, title only?
Okay. Bill number 1449, an ordinance incorporating certain territory known as 4978 County Road 304 into the corporate limits of the city of Fulton, Missouri, establishing initial zoning. I move this for a second reading at the next regular council meeting by title only.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion and a second to advance bill number 1449, is there any further discussion of that motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a second, maybe a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will. I didn't hear, I didn't hear one either. Oh, okay. Do we have one now?
Yep, I have one.
So, any further discussion before we go?
Unlike the other one, this one will require utilities, but we've got all that in the area, is that?
Everything's close. Daryl's not here, are they on our electric or they on? Get it up. Sewer's real close.
They have all city utilities, the only thing they don't have is sewer, and the sewer is on their property. So, it's just a matter of him running the sewer down and tapping the man down close to the manhole.
And they have to pay a permit fee for that, right?
Fifty bucks. Fifty bucks.
In that county water, though?
No, sir, it's city water, I think.
Is that city water?
I think he has all city utilities, is what he told me.
Including trash pickup now?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Very good, any other question? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing bill 1449, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. We'll now consider bill number 1450, which is annexing a property we had a hearing on earlier, and this is requested by HLW Builders. Councilman Shyland, would you please present 1450?
Bill number 1450, an ordinance incorporating certain territory as requested by HLW Builders Incorporated into the corporate limits of the city of Fulton, Missouri, establishing additional zoning and establishing effective date. I move that bill number 1450 be passed the next second meeting for second reading.
Very good, do I have a second? Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
I believe I heard a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to advance 1450, is any further discussion of the motion?
One thing that I'm noticing on the, on the ordinance, almost to the bottom here, it says the city will be able to furnish normal municipal services to said area within a reasonable time, like the other ordinance did, and that's very typical, but that doesn't reflect what we talked about this evening.
It's in his petition.
Right, it's in his petition. This is something stated by the state statutes, but given that he stated it in the notarized petition, that understanding is, is clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing 1450, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. So, 1450 advances. We'll now consider second reading ordinances. Bill number 1448 is an ordinance that has to do with taking to the voters, asking the voters for a decision on approval of local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles and trailers. This, again, is required to be able to keep our revenue stream going, and I think we've already had first reading, so Councilman Cannel, if you'd do first and second this evening?
Second, third.
If you'd please, second and third, rather, and if you'd go ahead with that, please.
Sure. Bill number 1448, an ordinance providing for submission of a proposal to continue application and collection of local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased, purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the primary election to be held August 2nd, 2016. I move we pass this for third reading tonight.
Second. Very good, I have a motion and a second to advance 1448, is any further discussion of the motion?
Is the term "sales tax" correct?
Yes.
Or is it "use tax"?
This is, the language is almost straight off the ballot, off of the law.
Okay, the state law? Okay, thanks, Bill. Anything else? Very good, all those in favor of advancing 1448, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. 1448 is advanced for third reading. Councilman Cannel, would you please present 1448?
Bill number 1448, an ordinance providing for submission of a proposal to continue application and collection of the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the primary election to be held August 2nd, 2016. I move we adopt bill 1448.
Second. Good, I have a motion and a second to advance 1448 for final reading. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing 1448 for final consideration, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The yeses have it, thank you. You've heard bill number 1448 presented three times, and it's now time for final consideration. If you'd please answer the clerk's roll call with a yes or a no, please.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Cannel?
Yes.
Six affirmative.
Very good, thank you. That does it for ordinances, we'll now, I do not have any appointments for this evening. We do have a couple announcements here, and again, I think MML elected, newly elected, well, I see they've taken out the newly elected official training conference that's to be held in Columbia on June 9 and 10, and it's like today you needed to let city clerk know if you were going.
I think I've heard from everyone, so I think we're good on that.
Very good, thank you. A reminder that the city employee picnic is this Friday, Friday the 13th, and fun time will be had by all, come and eat well, you all are invited, and there'll be plenty of door prizes if I don't miss something. So, also, MML Central Division will be meeting June 1 in Moberly, and you all are invited to go for that. We need to know by the, May the 24th. Any other announcements I've missed?
Yeah, I have, I have one, if it's okay.
Sure.
I was requested to line up a possible tour of the Calaway Nuclear Plant. Based on the email that I sent out to you all a week or so ago, and the responses that I've heard back from, the two remaining possible dates is the afternoon of May 31st and the afternoon of June 17th. Those are, the 17th is a Friday.
31st is, is.
Tuesday.
May 31st, isn't that along with the holiday weekend?
Tuesday after.
The Tuesday after, yeah.
Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. So, everybody be back?
Hopefully.
Maybe.
I can see it anytime, so whenever.
Do you have a deadline that you need to have responses?
Well, no, not really, but I mean, we, we gotta narrow down to those two dates. The 31st to the 17th.
In the past, when we've done this, we've had to give our social security numbers.
I'm guessing we will again.
Right, we do, you will.
But I'm not gonna ask for it until we know who's gonna go.
I probably won't go.
So, based on what Richard said, June 17th?
I prefer that day.
June 17th.
That's just me.
June 17th, going once, going twice, June 17th, we'll set it up. June seventeenth, we'll set it up.
Well, we tried to get, get it in for the outage and I didn't ask Ann early enough, so I apologize for that.
It's all good.
You could've seen a little bit more.
June seventeenth. Probably by the end of May, it's gonna, because like they have to do security background checks and do some of that stuff, that might, it's gonna take them a couple of weeks. So probably by the end of the month, I'm gonna have to have a solid list of who wants to go. And I'll communicate with Ann tomorrow, let her know the date and then she'll give me the requirements. One requirement is you can't wear like open-toed shoes, in which you wear leather shoes. That's the thing I remember.
That's about it, that's the big deal.
Okay? Thank you.
And high heels are not recommended even if, because of the grading and stuff.
Is this other stuff in our packet just for information?
It'll be for the work.
No, that's for the work session.
Okay.
And I do have one more announcement.